All right, let's stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Daley?
Here.
Vice President Schwartz?
Here.
Trustee Clements?
Here.
Trustee Hammond?
Here.
Trustee Parr?
Here.
Okay, thanks for being here. It's 8:43. If anybody hasn't voted yet, now's the time. Go do it. Polls don't close till nine. So that's the big news. That's what we're here to do tonight. But I also just want to share that we were all just at the Haldane Arts Awards. And, you know, I've gone to these awards before, but I think there was something so special about it tonight. I think, you know, there was a big thank you for Brian that made it really special. But it was really powerful. We had -- our students are so talented and so passionate. And what a huge thank you to all of the faculty and staff that support that. The administrators, the teachers, and a huge thank you to Katie Bissinger, who's our Fine Arts Booster Club president, who's really the -- she's the force. She's the force behind the arts. And she's done an incredible job. So a huge thank you to her. And yeah, it was a great night. So we are going to kind of hang tight until the results are awarded to us sometime after nine. I know there is some business to take care of, so we'll go through stuff. But we're going to kind of be waiting for the results. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bowers, so she can go through her superintendent's report.
And I'm going to kind of flip it around a little bit, because our new high school principal hasn't shown up yet.
Oh, I hope he can get lost.
Yes, our new NR. So... They're milling and chatting.
Yeah.
Milling and chatting.
People were introducing themselves.
Okay. So actually, why don't I do this? I'll launch into mindset, and then we'll do that. Okay. So for -- as a reminder, we've talked about it a couple of times, but we will have the books, the book mindset, available for anybody who would like to read it this summer. If this is great beach reading, for those of you who are going to sit by the surf and...
You know, it actually is. I was at the beach in -- over spring break, and I saw another woman sitting on her -- I was not reading mine at the beach, but I did see another woman sitting there reading mindset at the beach.
And so this is a book that we've read as a board and as a community. Last year, some of our teachers had a book read on it. And it's a very powerful book, especially related to what we are doing now and teaching kids how to become the best learners, the best versions of themselves that they can be. And so we -- the first half of the book, we discussed a couple of months ago. The last half of the book, we're talking about today. And this book is really, as it got into the later chapters, it started talking about how mindset is important for parents and the way that they present themselves to their children. And the way that they give praise to their children is very important. And they also talked about leadership. But I think the important thing in relationship to what we do here and our school and what we share with parents is the concept of the growth mindset and the fixed mindset. And the idea is that sometimes the way that we speak to our children, or the way that we speak, in my case now, to my grandchild or my grandchildren, is very important. And by saying things like, "You're so smart," you know, "Look at how smart you are and how much you learned in a given period of time," or some other types of things that really say, "You are very special, and this is who you are. And because you are this special person, this will happen." And the -- and I remember saying to my own children, you know, "Oh, that -- you're just so smart. You did that so well. Congratulations," and making them think, "Yes, I am so smart." But what they're saying is praise, don't necessarily praise attributes. Praise who they are as they try hard. They do persevere. They have grit. They have all the soft skills we're trying to grow. And so if you read this book, it's just a little variation on the theme. Just shift the way you speak to your children just a little bit to really make them understand that hard work, effort, perseverance is what they should be really going towards, or that should be their goal, and how we can help them grow into that mindset, that they realize that if they're not good at something right now, they're not good at it yet. They're going -- they can change their strengths. They can change what they have as their talents. And it all depends on the mindset and how you're thinking about it. So that was one part of the last chapter, or the last chapters of the book. The other talked about leadership and talked about two very distinct kinds of leaders. One who likes to be the person who is the savior, that comes and fixes things and makes the school district or the corporation, or wherever they exercise their leadership, makes them the person who's special, and everybody else is there, supporting the fact that they're the genius, they're the special, they're the leader of whatever they are the leader of. And then the other type of leader is one that nurtures and grows and really supports the people that they work for and provides whatever they need in order to become the best versions of themselves. So the latter part of the book really talked about thinking about what we say, thinking about how we present, thinking about all of the things that we should be doing for our children and for the people we work with and the people that we support. And so that's a very quick synopsis of the second part of the book. So if any of you have any thoughts you'd like to share about it, or anything that really was especially meaningful to you, we'd love to hear it.
I specifically like, you know, the books dealing with, you know, education. I prefer books like this, that you can actually see how this can connect to many things, to how a CEO would want to read this book, and a teacher in a classroom would want to read it, a parent would want to read it. And you can really make connections. You know, every year I have to write a high school graduation speech, and I'm sure I'm going to find a bunch of quotes from this book that'll be incorporated into it, because, you know, what's good for the CEO is good for the high school graduate walking out, you know, off that stage. So this was really good. And this was great. This was a great tradition that you started with us, and, you know, hopefully we'll continue to do it.
Yeah, I like the focus on process over product.
Right.
I think about that a lot in a lot of different ways.
The journey.
The journey, instead of, you know, where you get. And I think that that's something that we're talking a lot about with, you know, authentic learning and projects and cooperation, and that it's about how we get there and what we're doing along the way. Not that the product's not important, but that the process is equally important, at the very least, and maybe even more important, depending on the situation. So that kind of sticks out to me as a resonating theme. Yeah.
They also talked a lot about coaches and teachers and the different types of coaches, the ones that berate and really pull people down and try to keep pushing and pushing and pushing to make them better, and how that actually is counterintuitive of what you're trying to do. And then the one that builds you up and says, "It's really all about the game and what you did than it is. It's not about the win. It's about doing your best, pushing, persevering, trying, and doing it in the best way we can." And actually, when they were describing that type of coach, you could actually name some of our coaches that you actually have seen support our students, make them better, realize that it's how they play, it's what they do together, and it's not necessarily always the win. The win is a nice thing, but the win is not the goal. The win is to develop and to grow our students in the classrooms, on the fields, or on the stage, as we saw tonight.
So I, I mean, I have a couple of things that I'd like to point out. I don't think this is what we're doing here, but I think that it's really important. I mean, I started graduate school in the early 1990s, and there was this big emphasis on a lot of the social emotional characteristics, things people now call these noncognitive skills, things like perseverance, self-efficacy, you know, really emphasizing that, and then sort of really moving over into like, oh, no, really focusing on standards and academics, which are important. And now, you know, there's a lot of talk about mindset and perseverance and grit. And I just, I think neither one of them, again, I don't think that's what's happening here, but I think we really run a great risk when we put too much emphasis on mindset or grit, because it doesn't matter what kind of mindset, or how much grit, or how much perseverance a kid has. If they're not in an academic context that is providing really high-quality instruction, setting really rigorous standards, and really encouraging kids to achieve, you know, at their potential, it doesn't really matter how much grit you have. So that's what, again, I don't think that's what's happening here, but I, when I start to hear these words over and over again, I start to just step back a little bit from it. But grit, yeah, grit and mindset are going to work best when there's really fantastic instruction happening in the classroom.
One or the other, you have to have.
Right, exactly.
Right.
And the other thing, and I don't really know how to do this, but like, and this is kind of related, but like, one of my giant pet peeves about, in the, about sort of how we talk about education in the United States, is all the adults who feel like it's okay to say, like, "I'm really not very good at math. I'm not good at math," you know? And it would be a great -- and a lot of people really feel very comfortable saying, like, "I can't do math, you know? I'm not a math person." And I think it would be, you know, without remotely wanting to tell parents, like, how they should talk to their kids, I think it would be really great to begin to raise our adult awareness about how we talk about ourselves also really has an impact on kids. I mean, and I, it's funny, I was actually working with somebody recently who has worked with Carol Dweck in the past, and I am one who will often say, like, "I'm really, like, I'm so this or that," usually something not positive. And, you know, this person really pointed out to me that even as an adult, like, you know, in my life, it's important how I say that. But I think, you know, especially when it comes to something like mathematics, we talk about how, as a nation, as a country, you know, we really want our students to, we want, and our students can achieve better at mathematics. But I think it really takes us as a community, everybody really recognizing that every kid, right, can, every kid, you know, pretty much can be successful, whether it's mathematics or writing, or, yeah.
And one of the things that, for those of you who have read this book, it's on page 69, there's a number of diagrams that are shown. And the first diagram is, there are four different adults that drew a picture, and without any lesson or any support for them artistically. And then after going through a number of lessons, they then drew the same picture, these are self-portraits of themselves, and the huge and dramatic difference. And these are the same people. It's just with a shift in what they believe they could do, and also the efficacy, the self-efficacy, knowing that they had the ability to do it. The pictures changed dramatically. And when I, the first time I saw this, it was hard to believe that they were the same people that drew the pictures. But I think that's what you're talking about, Peggy. It's, you know, it's making sure that we have whatever it is, whether they feel that they're good about, they're good at something or not, we know that we can change that, and we can help to support it and modify their belief system in themselves.
No, I mean, I actually, I mean, I think about, without going into too much detail, sort of messages that I gave my own child when he was younger about what he was good at and what was a struggle for him. And I, you know, in retrospect, I wish I, you know, I had been more aware of this, you know? And I, again, it's like, I think one of the challenges for us is we're really wanting these different things from, not wanting these different things from our kids, but wanting to support the development of these different skills in students, is without being heavy-handed, without being preachy, without being too inappropriate, beginning to help all adults, teachers and parents, really think about how we talk about ourselves, too, you know? Because I think those messages, you know, can really come through, you know? "I can't draw. I can do this."
So it's, it also takes a lot of effort to change how you present to your children, or in my case, to my grandchildren. And after reading this book, I can't tell you the number of times that I started saying something like, "Oh, you are so smart to try so hard," you know? You had to keep pushing it back and bring -- and it's natural for us to say, what the book at least says, will promote the fixed mindset. "I'm either smart or I'm not, and I don't have the ability to change it." But now we're trying to explain, yes, you do have the ability, and we can give you the tools, and that's the whole idea behind our learner profile. So this is all fitting in to where we're going. And it's -- and actually, we had a wonderful showing of a movie from the PTA yesterday, "The Most Likely to Succeed," and the one student that everybody kind of watched through the movie, who had failure after failure after failure, after the event where he was trying to show his talents, went by because he wasn't able to do it. He kept going. He persevered. And in the middle of the summer, way after school ended, he learned that he could change what he did. And he had, he understood the growth mindset at that point.
And he had support from
Right.
his teacher, his parent, and just continued.
And there was at one point where I could feel the kind of tension that the teacher was feeling as he watched him make the same mistake in many different ways over and over again. And he could have gone and said, "Let me show you how to fix it." And he was able not to do that, and let him figure it out for himself. So thank you for showing that. So we have an introduction and then a couple of additional things that we would like to share. I'd like to introduce you momentarily to our new high school principal, Mr. Peter Carucci. Peter is, has come to us as an experienced teacher in the foreign languages. He is multilingual. How many languages do you speak?
A lot.
Multilingual. He's been a teacher in the Yorktown School District. He was an assistant principal at Lehman High School in the Bronx. Presently, he is an assistant principal in, and I'm, Tuckahoe. I couldn't remember the word.
You've taken it out of your mind. I'm not holding that against him.
So he's presently the assistant principal of Tuckahoe. He's, was one of about 25 candidates that we screened. We are just slightly under 80 candidates that applied for the position. And he will be joining us on July 1st, pending the board approval. We are very glad to have him. Welcome, Mr. Peter Carucci. Would you like to come up and say a few words?
Good evening. I wanted to say I'm truly honored and extremely excited to have been selected as the next principal of Haldane High School. I think I'd like to continue to build on all the successes of Mr. Brian Alm right here, who has really, I mean, even if we look at what happened tonight, has, you know, celebrated the arts and celebrated all the wonderful diversity of student talents. I just want to reaffirm my commitment to all of you that that's something I hope to do as well. And I look forward to being a very strong part of the community. And once again, I thank you for a warm welcome. Thank you.
Dana, do you want to talk a little bit about what people can expect over the next few weeks, seeing Peter around, or?
Yeah, I, what we will, what is in the planning process, and there'll be information about dates and times when we're able to figure out exactly when it will work. We anticipate having both a morning and a late afternoon coffee for the parents that would like to come in and meet Peter. We will have some time for our students and maybe a little celebration, a little ice cream social with our kids. And we anticipate having a reception for our faculty as well. So those dates and times will be forthcoming. And I know that both Brian and Peter have, are going to link up at different times, so he can shadow Brian, understand the district, get to know some people, and have an opportunity to spend a day or two here before he takes over July 1st.
And we are so excited that you're coming on board. The board is, we're just really excited. It was a really, like, unanimous, energetic decision to bring you on. So thanks for accepting the position, and we're lucky to have you.
I should also say that we had two committees that interviewed all the final candidates. One was a student committee. And I tell you, I sat with the students during all the interviews, and they were pretty tough. You know, they wanted to make sure that they had the right person there. And the other was an adult committee that consisted of community members, parents, teachers, and support personnel for the district. So they got, he got to meet a number of people and was our unanimous choice. So, welcome.
And Evan Schwartz is back. He just ran up and closed the polls for us and came back down. So we all...
Thank you for opening that door.
Yes.
So it should be about 20, 25 minutes.
And then we have some things we need to celebrate. One of the things everybody is going to feel now is the shift as Brian starts transitioning out. And I can tell you that there is no question that you will be sorely missed here. And there's been so many, there are so many things that will resonate and remind us of you on a regular basis. But we've been very lucky to have a lot of accolades lately. And all your hard work and effort that has gone into making Haldane High School what it is and educating our students to the best of your ability is really paying off. And we just received word that we are a reward school for 16, 17 school year. And the designation came from last year, not this present school year, last school year, 14, 15. And so we received our reward school designation. For those of you who remember back a couple of months ago, we were nominated by the State Education Department. Haldane High School was nominated for a National Blue Ribbon School. We accepted the nomination, and a lot of, a lot of time and effort went into creating a really wonderful application. And it was, it's so meaningful and so wonderful that one of the things that we want to do now is turn that application into some kind of a brochure about the high school. And all the different components and the things that really make it special are all going to be part of that. And we continue to work towards potentially kind of redefining our high school. And with the XQ grant, as we are finishing the final stages of the XQ grant, we have to submit Monday. And then we'll find out what the status is sometime in July. So many accolades, Brian. It's all your hard work and effort that has brought us to this point. So, you know, as we say hello to one, we're going to say goodbye to a good friend, and we will miss you. So, okay. You received, the board received a, about, well, just yesterday, actually, the Smart Schools Investment Plan for the Smart Schools Bond Act. We are in the process, if you remember, of developing the Smart School Investment Plan. We will receive about $240,000 in technology and infrastructure support from New York State. And we are at the point that it was presented to the board yesterday. It now will go on our website for public comment. And then we will have a hearing, and then that's going to be, what is it, the first one in June?
June 7th.
June 7th. We will have a hearing for people who have questions or want additional information, or if they want to share their thoughts, that would be the time to do that. And then we will submit our final plan. We've submitted the preliminary plan now, and once the comment section is, or the time is over, we'll submit the final plan. So that's coming.
Is that hearing, is that during a board meeting, or is that, okay, so it's during the board meeting?
Right.
If anybody wants to come and ask questions at that point, that's when they do.
Right. And Leah will help us through that process a little bit. And predominantly, what we've, what we're talking about is upgrading our infrastructure with all of the support that we're going to need for our students technologically. We really need to make sure that we're ready for it. And we're just about at our capacity, and sometimes a little beyond our capacity technologically. We also chose, because it is something that we have to finance, and the state pays us back over a 10-year period, or 15, for the Smart Schools money?
15.
Okay, for 15 years. We didn't want to buy a lot of devices, because they will be long, they will have outlived their usefulness way before we stop paying for it and before the state stops giving us funding. So really, the infrastructure and the things that are kind, that more than simple devices are what we're looking for for this. And I don't know if you have any thoughts or questions on it, or we'll just, we'll post it on the website and see what the community has to say.
Yeah, the investment plan is pretty clear.
Okay.
That's the same night as Booster Club Awards, the Booster Club Awards night?
It's the 6th, isn't it?
I believe it is the 7th. The Booster Club is the 6th?
The 6th, yep.
Thank you.
Yep. So we also have another celebration of some of the fine work that our students have done all through the year. And this Thursday evening is our discovery night, and our students in kindergarten through 12th grade will really show their, their fine work that they did and the highlights of the year, whether it be with project-based learning, or work within a classroom, or artistic endeavors. And the creation of things will be highlighted. And we ask you to join us if you have some time. It starts at 5:45. We have an informal period. We have actual presentations. And then at the end, we will once again hear the Blues Devils. So they will close our evening for us. And so we welcome you to spend Thursday night, 5:45 to about 8:15. A reminder that the Haldane Central School will be closed on May 26th, 27th, and 30th for Memorial Day. Originally, we scheduled a four-day weekend, but because we had so few snow days, there's an additional day that will be added to that. And so we have a very long Memorial Day weekend coming up.
Okay, good. Let's go into the information reports. I don't think there's any student representatives here. So Mr. Harrington.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So celebrating the arts this evening, we also get to continue to celebrate the arts in elementary school on Friday. Katie Bissinger is certainly quite busy this week, and I want to again thank her for her hard work, not just with this evening's Rising Stars, but with all of her work in organizing Friday's Arts Alive. So we're really excited to tap into all of the rich resources that we have here in our own community. 14 workshops are being offered to our 5th grade students over the course of the morning. And then following lunch, they'll have an opportunity to, for our high school students to perform in front of them. So just to give you a quick overview, 14 workshops, figure sculpture, introduction to jazz dance, textile design, documentary filmmaking, voice and physical technique, tap dance, aerial circus arts, improvise, creative writing, musical trees, In-N-Out of This World, recess game design, and action drawing. So we're quite excited. It's going to be a fabulous day.
Great. I mean, that sounds awesome.
And don't we have one of our teachers coming back that has, I think that we should highlight?
Our former librarian is our, Ms. Julie Hoffman, is coming back to do circus arts with our 5th graders. So we're quite excited. Yes.
Ms. Sniffin?
Good stuff. Just a couple of quick things. I'd just like to remind everybody of June 10th, which is the Middle School Drama performance, underneath the direction of Jenna Isabella and Andrea McHugh. So hopefully, we can all support that night. I'd also like to just quickly read something that one of the 8th graders wrote in regards to Frost Valley. We were at Frost Valley last Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. And I think you've all heard me speak many times about the value I think the students get out of that trip. So I'd just quickly like to read this. It's not long, but, "After experiencing Frost Valley for ourselves, we can conclude that it is truly a worthwhile trip. Not only did we bond with our peers, we participated in activities..." Not only did we bond with our peers, we participated in activities that challenged us out of our comfort zone. The 8th grade learned to work together efficiently and effectively as a team. Overall, our Frost Valley experiences let us bond with one another as well as learn more about ourselves and about others. It was a fabulous trip, the best trip that I've been on. And I think I did miss one in 11 years, but it was by far the best. The students were amazing. So, I just want to congratulate all of them. And finally, we've been focusing, I think you've heard over the year, on service learning. And we have our final service learning project that'll take place this Friday with the 6th grade students, and they will be helping us out in beautification of the campus. So, thank you."
Thank you. Mr. Allm.
Hi, everybody. Good to see you again this evening. I just want to join in congratulating all of the fellow Volante winners and nominees this evening for the Evening of Rising Stars. It just continues to grow and become a really important event to the culture of our whole district, and it's truly something special. Just a quick note about prom. I'll just say off the bat, prom was fantastic, but there's this really interesting, I guess, moment of panic that came about. It was at the Thera Hotel this year, which is one of our kind of preferred locations. And we have a very standard, excellent room that we use there that's very excellent from a supervisory standpoint, from a principal's mindset. It's all kind of pretty self-contained in one room, and the bathroom's there, and the food comes out, and there's really only one entrance and exit, and it is the same. So, I walked in, and we were in a different room, and a very sizable ballroom that is separate from the place where they would be dining. And the bathrooms that they were to use were at the complete utter end of the lobby. So, our students would have to walk across the lobby, past the bar, past the restaurant to be able to go to the bathroom and intermingle with, you know, the guests there. So, after I pulled my heart off from the floor and put it back into my chest, and I took an inventory of all the students, the 150-plus students, our biggest number ever that attended prom, a thought occurred to me, "What are you so crazed about? These are fantastic kids. Everything will be perfectly fine." And it was. And they, you know, used the bathroom like the young adults that they are and crossed the lobby without incident and intermingled with the other guests there, such that the folks at the Thera Hotel were even scratching their own heads, saying, "Is that a high school prom, really?" You know, they were asking us afterwards. So, it was a relief, but then again, you know, not a surprise at all given our student body. So, congratulations to them. And it is the season of accolades and many more accolades to come in the coming days.
And I should let you know that Ms. Hackett is home with the stomach flu. So, she will not be presenting tonight. So, I hope she's feeling better.
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of quick announcements. Tomorrow's our last day of the regular season for the spring season, so please check the website for announcements regarding sectionals coming up. Also, wanted to thank everyone that came to the baseball and basketball fundraiser last week in Beacon. Thank you to Dr. Bowers and to all the parents and community members that came out to support our athletes and our programs. And I also wanted to mention that June 6th is the Booster Clubs Awards Night. June 7th is my birthday, so if you're planning on getting me anything, you have about two weeks to go shopping. So, but that's it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Tardy.
Good evening. There's a couple of things I'd like to talk about that are new on campus, and hopefully one will be new on campus next week. If anybody's been up by the district office in Mabel Merritt Building lately, we have four new visitor parking spots, and that brings us up to five there. And they've been well-used this week especially. There's been a lot of cars in there, and that makes me feel good. Another thing is, for the last year or so, Mr. Allm has been asking me, "Can we get communication from our PA system over to Mabel Merritt from the high school?" And I've been told by Duchess Tell our audio people that, you know, it can't be done. If you get a wire over there for us, we'll hook it up. Well, thanks to the great perseverance of Michael Zikatos, our maintenance guy, he finally found the path. Came from the high school underground to a little junction box a little bit west of Mabel Merritt, and then found another path that did come to the Mabel Merritt. So, now the wiring is there, and Duchess Tell just have to come hook up now. And we'll have high school announcements in the Mabel Merritt Building for the first time. And it's that time of year where it seems like every night there is a different setup and a different event going on. So, I'd like to thank my staff for all their hard work and dedication for this, to making it good for everybody in the school. Thank you. Good night.
Okay, committee minutes, the arts booster club minutes are there. Communication from the public? Let's go into the consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion, please? Any discussion? We are looking at the minutes from our meetings held on May 3rd and May 10th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda, financial. Can I have a motion, please? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Consent agenda, personnel. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Any discussion? We've got some really exciting things here. The most important, exciting one is the appointment of our high school principal, Mr. Peter Carucci. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Congratulations, Peter. Unfinished business. So, we're just talking about our June 21st workshop meeting. We're going to do the- we were discussing the retirees and the tenured teachers, and last year we separated them, and we talked about kind of going back to doing it in one night. So, I think that's what we agreed on, right? So, we're going to have the retirees and the tenured teachers be presented in the same night, the old and the new, right? And then also, that same night, we're going to have an update on the Monolith Solar Project and just kind of basically how it went this year and the parking updates, our ongoing issues and solutions that we're working on. Okay. New business, the approval of the Westchester-Putnam School Board Association Slate of Officers and Directors. Do you want to read that, Ann?
Sure. The recommended action is that the Board of Education casts a yes or no vote for the 2016-17 Westchester-Putnam School Board Association nominating committee slate of officers and directors.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? I think we have to say yes.
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 Do we roll by one? Is it a roll call?
It's a roll call?
It's not a roll call.
Well, just in unison. Ready? One, two, three. Yes. Great. Okay. And then number two, we can't do yet. We just have to hang out here and wait so we can accept our results. So, I don't know. Ann, do you want to sing a song? Where are those Blue Devils? The Blues Devils.
We were saying, what time of a meeting is it going to be where we're not presenting the budget again tonight?
Do you want to just do it for old times' sake? Do you want to like just go through it? Bring up some slides?
That library levy.
That library levy is not our default. I think you can stop tape unless this is of interest. Okay, we are back in action. Ms. Judy Meyer, would you like to do the honors?
Yes, thank you. Total of 603 votes today, which is lower than some other years. I'll go through the propositions, the school budget, proposition yes to 451, no, 147, four blank, and 582 total. The bus, yes, 429, no, 164, blank, nine, a total of 577. The board members, Laura Hammond, 509, Jennifer Daly, 460, and Margaret Clements, 445. There were seven write-ins, I won't go through them, in one machine, and six in another machine. Any questions?
What was the first vote again? The top, the voter budget, the count?
The whole budget?
Yeah.
451, yes. 147, no. Four blank, 582 as a total. Please God let that be written. Thank you.
Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you.
I said to them, you know, I went in there at 7:00 in the morning to open the polls, and I was like the same people at 9:00.
No, you can read that.
Long day.
No, not for me, for them. I wasn't there from 7:00 to 9:00. I laughed for 14 hours.
They know what to do.
I left the house later this morning than I normally do.
So, we have a little business to take care of, that means.
A little. We do.
Good night, thank you. Go ahead. We're going to- we have to do some like dancing around the seats to make sure everybody's still here. Good night. Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Mr. Carucci. First order of business would be for- what did I say? I have to consult my notes.
I believe that Peggy needs to resign, and then we need to appoint Laura to take the rest of Peggy's- no, am I saying that right? Laura will take the rest of Peggy's year and- yes, the seat that Peggy was holding. And we will appoint Peggy-
Okay.
-for the rest of the year.
Resignation, okay. I'll take it.
Is that correct?
No, right. We're swearing her into the vacancy. And then Laura is going to cover-
No, Laura's going to cover the rest of what was Gillian Thorpe's term and then Joe's term. And I'm going to go-
Now, I'm covering- Laura's going to cover from May through June. Tonight through June. If that's what you choose.
And you're going to finish out the one year, Peter's.
Oh, that's right. Right. Okay. So, I have in my hands a resignation from Peggy Clements. And as Peggy was elected to the seat to fill the remainder of Peter Henderson's term, which commences tonight and ends on June 30th, 2017, at this time, I can swear Peggy in to fill that office. Would you like to take that with the box?
Sure.
And here's your- you would just read it, and I'll accept that as you having taken me.
Sure. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Trustee of the Board of Education of the Haldane Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, you have a vacancy?
I'd like to nominate Laura Hammond to fill that vacancy.
I will second it.
Okay.
And I will be sworn in.
Now, it's your turn.
All those in favor? Aye.
So, you're taking- Oh, yes. Would you like to-
Peggy's term until the end of June.
Actually, she can just- she can say this right from her own mic.
That makes sense. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Trustee of Board of Education of the Haldane Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay. So, I think we're all good. Now, we can continue. We continue on. All right. Congratulations, everybody. We did it. Do we need to-
Recommended action?
Yes, please. Go ahead.
That the Board of Education accepts the results of the annual district meeting budget vote and trustee vote for Tuesday, May 17th, 2016, as indicated.
May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All right. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, please. Oh, wait, is there any communication from the public? Santa, Paul, anything? I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Aye.